Board meeting to order, and at this time, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all the board members are in attendance. And the next order of business is the election of school board officers. And I will, this is for the 23 calendar year, right? So let's get that right. So in the first order of business is to select a president for the term. I am taking motions for nominations. Anyone for president?
I'll make the motion for Christopher Freshour for president.
Okay, Mr. Trustee Philbeam has motioned that Mr. Freshour be considered for president. Anyone want to second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. McKenzie. Mr. Freshour, it's always important that the person want to be part of that position. Do you accept the motion?
Uh, yes, I accept the motion and honored, thank you.
Okay, are there any other nominations for the position of president? Seeing none, we're closing that, and those in favor of selecting Mr. Freshour as our new president for the year, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, this is the best part, I get to hand it off to him now. So, Mr. Freshour, Kim, will you switch? Yep. Congratulations. Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, well, since I've been president for 30 seconds, bear with me as I fumble through this today. Need to approve, make a nomination for vice president.
Um, I'd like to throw my name in there for vice president. I'd love to work with you.
Okay. Any others?
Any, one second, the motion.
Second motion.
I'll support.
Are there any other motions for vice president?
I'd like to nominate Keith O'Mean.
Okay. We got a second on Keith?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Um, my thought with nominating Keith is that he has the experience and the knowledge of facilities and the football field, and he's been on board for a while, so he has the years of experience in the school.
Okay, anyone else?
Um, yeah, I think I have lots of experience being, you know, representative on the MASB and to the ISD and being a local business owner and attorney. I think we would work well together. So I've been on boards before, I've been presidents of boards before. I have a great relationship with Scott. We've, even before he was worked here, we were neighbors, friends. I think we work well together, and I think, Chris, you and I would work well together, and I think it would really unify the board.
Okay. Okay, so, looking for votes for Tara for vice president? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call, all right.
So I guess you really have two options, so it's either a vote for Keith or a vote for Tara, I would say is fair enough.
Okay, Crystal Root?
I'm Keith.
Ms. Fauleski? Tara?
Tara.
Ms. Wilkins?
Keith.
Keith? Keith.
Does he have the vote?
Yeah, he has, Mr. Pillbeam has a majority.
So he's been selected?
So he's been selected as vice president? All right, secretary?
I'll make motion for JC for secretary.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Or other nominees, I'm sorry. Okay, seeing none. Make a motion to have JCB secretary Dundee Schools?
All those in favor?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next up is treasurer.
I'll make a motion for Tara McKenzie to become treasurer of Dundee Schools.
You got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Board member appreciation one? Yeah, real quick, where's Tanya? Tanya, I'm doing you a favor here. There you are. We're going to take a brief moment to take a picture over here of the new board for the independent real quick before we get back to business, so. Uh, you don't have to right now, no, this is the one I need. All right, real quick, in honor of board appreciation, each board member, you should find a certificate that shows the appreciation for your dedication to our children in the public education in Michigan, and then there's a gift certificate to a local eatery as they thank you for your service to our school district, so you'll find that. So, thank you again. Appreciate it. All right. On the school board organization, the regular school board meeting schedule, to approve the standard board. What's that? Oh, I'm sorry, administrative moments, skipped one. I could tell Brian was worried about getting to the queen of hearts, man. All right. Administrative moments. Start at the high school?
Mr. Crowe can't be with us tonight, so I'm going to start with Mr. Crowe's and then I'll go into the high school. So, Mr. Crowe wanted everyone to know, we're in the heart of the winter season, schedules jam packed. January, February are by far the most busiest months for the athletic calendar. Please come out and see all the great things that these student athletes are doing. This month, we're going to have snowball, which is upcoming on January 27th, followed by the dance on the 28th. The game will feature our boys' basketball team taking on our arch rival, Zaida. Congratulations to December student athletes of the month, Liberty Ostrander and Brayden Whittaker. From the high school, well, it's been, it's been busy. We kind of had a few water breaks, kind of had to work through a whole lot. But the good news was we were able to get everything taken care of with the team. There was a lot of people that were up here putting in a lot of hours, where we were able to start school on time. The cleanup and the restoration, to this point, has gone extremely well. The completion of the restoration process will take between now and probably in the middle of the summer. We're going to get everything restored, once we see how the gym floor settles, once we see how some things kind of go. The process has been very seamless, and I've been very impressed with, from our district, from the restoration process, from setsang, everything's gone really smooth. So, we were able to start school on time, and we're rolling now. Everything is back turned over to us and going. One of the most important things I want to say, because this is a board meeting that's right after our community Christmas, I just want to thank everybody in this community. It's really proud to be a member of this community in which everybody cares and takes care of community. The generous donations and support from Dundee for the Dundee Community Christmas Event this year was absolutely amazing. We were able to raise over $10,000 in donations and received over 900 toy gifts for toys for tots, Dundee vets, and individual business owners and other people in the community. On December 20th, we delivered food care package, gift cards, and toys to over 64 families in the greater Dundee area that needed extra assistance for Christmas. Each family received a 10-pound spiral cut smoked ham, 10-pound bag of potatoes donated by Horkey Farms, one dozen sugar cookies baked and decorated by Dundee High School students, cover gift cards, $125, and each kid received anywhere from 5 to 11 wrapped gifts, and 11 years old and older received gift cards because we didn't have any toys for 11 years old and over. So they received Amazon gift cards at $50 apiece. Thank you for the donation and support from all the local businesses, all the community, and all the people that make this an ongoing great tradition here, so, thank you.
Thank you. Riverside Academy?
Good evening. January 17th and 18th will be our second round of parent-teacher conferences. January 20th, we have TLC Community Credit Union coming in for their third round of a four-part series on financial literacy with our students. Midterm progress reports go out next week. And then my final one is a big thank you to Mr. Schroeder for that Christmas program that him and his staff run. It is really a magnificent program. One of our students, when she opened up her letter and looked at the Amazon gift card, she was so happy she actually cried. This program touches lives and it's because of his leadership, and I want to thank him for that.
Thank you. Middle school.
Good evening. First, I'd like to congratulate the new board members, and welcome, welcome. We have a lot of work to do and look forward to. As you know, we have a very difficult situation here at the middle school this past weekend, so I'd like to start by saying our thoughts and prayers are with the family. One of our Dundee staff members that we lost while working at the school. It was, it was a tough weekend. It was a tough weekend for everybody. Matter of fact, I think it was a tough Friday for Dundee in general, right? But it was, it was especially hard for our building, and we do have counseling place for some of our staff members, and we had a meeting with them today, so we're trying to support them as much as possible. But with that being said, we started our second semester last Tuesday, up and running. All scheduled changes are done with our kiddos, and they're excited, and it feels, like I said, I started to say last couple of board meetings, it feels like we're getting back to normal, if there's such a thing as normal. And this semester, we're really going to focus on PBIS, which is positive behavior intervention and support programs for our kiddos. And, you know, during COVID, we lost a lot of our trips and our, our special things kids look forward to, and we're starting to install those back. And this year, this semester alone, we're planning on four, and we're planning on the eighth grade camp, we're planning on a trip to the Mud Hens game. We're planning on a trip to the Phoenix movie theaters, and the last one, we're planning on a trip to KOA. So now, with that being said, it's not for everybody. It'll be one whole building trip, which would be the Mud Hens game, and then each grade will have a special trip for them. And that's an incentive for behavior and to be positive and be supportive. We're focused on kids doing the right things, right? And then if kids, you know, we all make mistakes, even as adults, we make mistakes, and we get zinged sometimes, right? So they can earn some points back, so there's a way to recover points that they have lost, so there's always incentive, so we, you know, sometimes you have a kid say, well, what do I, does it matter now? We've already lost by points, but this is a way for them to earn those points back. So we're trying to really focus on students and making school fun, and hopefully that will result in more positive attendance with our students, and then, you know, if they're here, their academics is there too. So, that's really all I have, but thoughts and prayers to our family and Viking family all around.
Thank you. Elementary school?
Yeah, Tara, microphone?
Not that I want to be on the microphone, but somebody told me to. All right, is that good? All right, so, um, we have just begun our mid-year data collection when we, last week, we just started preparing for that as students were coming back from break. So over the next couple of weeks, we will be working on that data collection, will be collecting their scores for both reading and math, and then, once we have all of that data collected toward the end of the month, we'll be having our staff data meetings where we analyze that and then take a look at what we need to do on the instructional side of things to support our students. We do have staff professional learning this week on Friday, and we'll be going over some instructional goals for the building. We will be having a PBIS refresher slash relaunch to get that moving again, and then our staff will also be partaking in some trauma-informed practice training. And that was something that they have requested more training and information on, so we're happy to be able to provide that for them. We do have career day at the elementary on the 18th, where students can dress up like their future careers that they're interested in. And then, our peer-to-peer training is going to continue this month. We had presented on that last month, and so our next round of of training and planning and prep work is, is going to take place this month as well. And then, I am going to be out of the building. I think you saw in an email from Mr. Leach, I'll be out of the building three days this week at a training for a program called Rocks, and it stands for Ruling Our Experiences, and it is a training that gets facilitators to be able to hold small group lessons with girls specifically. And what their goal is, is to create generations of competent girls. It's a 20-week program, and families can opt their students in. In our building, it'll be geared toward fourth and fifth grade students. So it'll be 20 lessons, 50 minutes, and small groups of girls, about eight to 15 students at a time. And so far, this program, they've been available since 2017. They've served over 30,000 girls, trained over 1,000 women as facilitators, and it is being used in 24 states. So we're excited to get it started here. There are a lot of lessons around, you know, helping girls succeed with relationships, with peers, and how to have tough conversations and things of that nature. Academics and setting goals, looking at careers, and just how to succeed in life, so. We're excited to be able to, to bring that to DES and hopefully then continue it beyond DES. So, also, each of our grade levels made a little thank you card for you guys to make sure you keep one at the end of your life. Thanks for all of you.
Thank you. Early childhood education, Ms. Plum?
Hi, everyone. I wanted to share that Head Start is working hard on getting their students ready for kindergarten. They're focusing right now on writing their names and letter recognition. Great Start shared that they're also working hard on kindergarten readiness, and we just received news that they had applied for and received some carryover funds for the classroom, so they are going to be purchasing new chairs for their classroom, and then, the other exciting part is they were able to pay for the staff to attend the Michigan AEYC conference this spring, and it paid for their attendance as well as their lodging, which is awesome. And then tomorrow, we will hold our first 10 grant meeting at 4 o'clock virtually, and that's the early childhood grant that we received that's focusing on family engagement and getting kids ready to join us here in kindergarten, and that's it for early childhood.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent?
All right, it's like waiting on pins and needles to see who's next when you go. 97C is something that we've talked a little bit about. There, it's one of the state grants to improve security in schools. So today, Officer Corey, Officer Shippey, and myself, we sat in with a company called Secure Education Consultants. They're out of Grand Rapids. They are, you might have read about, I think there was an article in a newspaper about Ida completing theirs. They use a company called ATAP, or American Threat and Assessment. Dundee Schools is meeting with ATAP tomorrow at 9:30 this, in the morning. Today was Secure Education Consultants, and we kind of have it narrowed down at this point to those two companies to provide our, our building assessments. So the state of Michigan is offering $2,000 per building, and then, these companies will come in and kind of evaluate during during, during the school day, they want to come in, that way they can actually see the kids in motion and how they're moving, and, and like, they're going to start at the high school. Mr. Schroeder and I haven't even talked about this yet, but they're going to start at the high school, sit down, interview him, look for just any, any areas of the high school that maybe we can improve on, and then they'd make suggestions based on that. So, it'll take a day and a half total, once they get in. It'll start anywhere from probably later this month to anywhere in the spring. We've kind of been dragging our heels a little bit, just until that money is officially guaranteed from the, from the state. We didn't want to pre-spend it without having it, but we are getting closer. So the state also released a Grow Your Own Grant. There's a national teacher shortage, so the Grow Your, Grow Your Own Grant is an opportunity to find staff members from within our building, buildings. They can actually be third parties, so auxilio, chart wells, they can be parapros, they can be teachers, really anybody qualifies, and it's a way to either gain your initial teacher certification or an added cert if you are already a certified teacher. So, so far, we have about four teachers interested in that, so definitely an exciting opportunity. We have a half-day this Friday, dismissal times range from 10:40 at Riverside all the way until 12:05 in the elementary. And lastly, just to thank you, I'm going to specifically mention Mrs. Heather Malone, but there was a whole group of individuals that donated prior to Christmas break. Mrs. Malone organized a fundraiser to help offset the lunch debts for the first semester. So, we exceeded our goal by a little bit. We raised $3,080. So what that did is, once that money's transferred over from the, from the organization that accepted the funds, that will offset all lunch debts through Christmas break, and then we will continue to chase down new lunch debts as they accrue now that we're back, because as soon as, as soon as you pay them off, you're behind. But, we definitely appreciate Miss Malone's effort and, and everybody that donated over $3,000 in the first semester. We thought that was awesome, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Technology?
Good evening, and thanks, everybody, for coming out tonight. I missed our last meeting, so I'm going to try and cover the last two months, but I'll, I'll be quick. I heard somebody say, oh, no, over there. So, I had the opportunity to attend a middle school staff meeting recently and discuss some basic macOS computer tips and things, but also to discuss some cybersecurity and techniques. So I just want to make sure that, that everybody knows that we, the technology team, are available as a resource to be out there and provide that kind of training if anybody's interested in the district. Got it. I'll be there. We also recently completed the technology setup for the portable classrooms, which was a fun project involving climbing around in the dirt underneath the portables. But, it's a great opportunity for us to test out some new things. We are doing a pilot program for some new interactive flat panel displays made by Smart Technologies, who made the smart boards that are in so many of our classrooms, but they've moved on to this, this new technology. So we're kind of piloting that in those classrooms to see if it would be a good fit for other grade levels in the district. Over the break, we had P and R communications come out and do preventative maintenance on our, all our handheld and bus radios. They didn't find any, any issues. So, you know, apart from a couple batteries that don't want to keep a charge very well, you know, we're, we're in good shape with, with the radios going forward. We are, another, another project to update you all on is the PA system. We're continuing to work on that, working with Red Letter Technologies to come out and update those classrooms that are, that, where they, the volume is a little lower than we would like it to be. They sent us a quote to come out, so we're working with them to, to get scheduled to come out and do that work. It's, it's tough to, tough to get them on the calendar, but we, we are actively working on that. And along with that, we're, we're hoping to find a good solution for the portables as well to tie them into, into the system. Apart from that, we are, we're working on, we're already looking forward to the summer, making plans for what we're going to do this summer differently than last summer. To help facilitate that, we are working on some of our storage spaces to prepare them and clean them up. We're going to work with an area electronics recycling company that's going to come out and they'll take, you know, our old broken and disused computers off our hands. And we're also selling some of our former Dell laptops that the staff used and turned in when we made the switch to MacBooks and Chromebooks. So, all those initiatives are underway, and everything's going well in technology land. Does anybody have any questions?
Great, thank you. Thank you. Maintenance?
Good evening, everybody. Congratulations on all your positions. Piggybacking on what Mr. Schroeder is talking about with all the water damage, I'm currently working with our HVAC software system provider to see if it's possible to have any and all HVAC alarms pushed to my cell phone, so I could get, you know, immediate feedback. Then I'm also working with Guardian Alarm, our monitoring company, to have the fire suppression system alerts to be monitored, monitored as well, because currently, they, they don't seem to be tied together. And I'm also working with a Crispin Construction in looking into adding a membrane to the roof ridge vents at the middle and elementary school to prevent snow from entering into the attic space, which is actually the old flat roof. During high wind events, when this happens, like we had recently, that snow finds its way into the ceilings of the second floor, and then it finds its way through penetrations from the newer roof, and then it makes it into the classrooms. So we're hoping that'll help mitigate that problem. And I'm also working with Guardian to try to get our ADA entrance access set up for the high school and middle the high school and middle school by remote release from the offices so they can automatically open doors for the, for the ADA access as well. So that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Business office?
Busy, busy everywhere around. Good evening. For January, for the business office is very busy because we are working on the 1099s for the year. Well, those will all be electronically so that employees can retrieve them on our employee portal. Also, 1099s for this year. We have quarterly reports and calendar reports that are done. Just think of all the things that you might do, get ready for your tax season. This is the time that we're working on various things like that. One thing that is new to our office is that the state has asked us to separate our grant codes for the fiscal year. So right now, we are date-driven in our system, in our finance system, but they're asking for us to develop and create brand-new account codes for each fiscal year. So that will grow our ledger by quite a bit. So we'll be working on that, creating those. And also in February, we'll be working on our annual budget amendment. This is our mid-year correction and updating to see what we can pinpoint as our expenses are so far this year and what we expect for the, as we go through the rest of the year. Also in January, we always have the Revenue Estimating Conference. This is with the Michigan School Business Officials. It's a two-day conference, and at this time, they give us information about things that we might need to know, information we might need to know as we develop the budget for the rest of this year and also for the upcoming school year. It takes all through the spring and sometimes through the summer to be able to tell us what the government is going to do as far as funding for our schools. At this conference, we'll also be discussing any changes in the retirement program, various things that we go through on accounting, laws, new GASB requirements for our accounting and for our audit information. So that conference is coming up January seventeenth and eighteenth. It's virtual, so we can just do that from our office. And that's January for us, and welcome to all the new board members. Thank you for those of you who've been serving a long time.
Thank you. Auxilio Custodial? Okay, Darryl's not here, so next meeting. Auxilio Transportation?
Good evening. Welcome, new board members, and thank you for other board members coming back. Like Mr. Carter said, we're busy with trips, athletics. And I got to say, I'm really proud that with schools around us canceling runs and things, we've been really lucky that it's been working for us. We have not had to cancel one route, so, so far, so good with that. And I want to say thank you to Tom. He's kind of made my building come up to standards with Wi-Fi finally and things like that. So we're kind of coming around to the rest of the building, so thank you. And that's kind of it for me. We're just trying to keep it rolling, keeping people in bus seats and bus aides coming. And we kind of go one step forward, two steps back, but we're making it work. Thank you.
Thank you. And Chartwells Food Service?
Good evening. I'll be real quick tonight. So we've been working on filling some staff seats with the high school and the elementary. We do have a, one person who is just waiting on her finisher clearance for the high school. Our second person for the elementary had to take a different position with, just with our process that takes a while. So we are in the search for someone for elementary. So if you know somebody who's interested in food service, please let them know that we have an opening. And then I met with Courtney and went over our blueprints for the upcoming elementary kitchen, and that went really well. We've got some good plans going, and she'll be coming in tomorrow for another walkthrough and to finish that up. So that's really all I have for tonight, but that's going really well.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the school board organization. Regular school board meeting schedule. To approve the standard board meeting dates for the 2023 as listed?
Yeah, I would like to just mention that the January date for next year, we pushed back to the Tuesday after Martin Luther King Day, just because it was such a short window of time this year to put it together. That was my observation. People might have vacations or anything on that Martin Luther King Day, so that is a Tuesday board meeting. So just if no one objects to that recommendation.
Okay, I'll need a motion.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed nay. Motion passed. Designation of School Board Liaison Representative to the ISD.
You skipped legal counsel.
Oh, we're, sorry. Appointment of Legal Counsel. Thank you, Tara. To approve Thrun Law Firm and Collins and Bleha as the school district's legal counsel for the 2023 school year. I'll need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is it just for one year?
It's a year-by-year thing. Every year, we re-approve the groups, so it's, it's been the same. And Thrun is well-known for, and both of them are both well-known school law firms that are experts in that area. Excuse me?
Sorry, how long have they been representing Dundee now?
I can't say that. I'm...
Fifteen-plus years since I've been.
Fifteen-plus years is, yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay? All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Designation of School Board Liaison Representative to the ISD. Tara, were you the liaison last year?
Yes, I've, I've been the liaison and be happy to continue that.
Okay. So the motion is to approve, is, is anyone else interested in that?
I guess my question is, exactly what is it? So when I Googled it and kind of did some research, I couldn't really get a straight understanding of exactly what that job requirement is.
Scott or Tara, would you like to chime in?
Go ahead.
I've, I've attended one, and it looks like, I'm going to guess there's about three meetings a year that you attend?
Like quarterly meetings.
Quarterly, okay, so four times a year, and then they...
It's comprised of all the schools that are part of the Monroe County ISD, and everyone has a representative from the school board, and...
It wasn't well-attended the last time we did have our representative there, so...
Small group meeting, they talk about their budgets, they talk about various educational, they put on presentations.
So it's a way for the local boards, I think, to connect?
Sort of networking and staying in touch, and...
Okay. So Tara would like to continue on. I'm going to make a motion to approve Tara McKenzie as liaison for the ISD for 2023 school year. I need a...
Second.
Motion in a second?
Was that a motion or you motioned?
You motioned.
You motioned, you seconded. There you go.
Yep.
Pay attention.
Any, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passed. All right, designation of newspaper of record for legal purposes. To approve the Monroe Evening News and the Dundee Independent as the newspapers of record for the Dundee Community School District for the 2023 school year. I need a motion in a second?
Second. Go ahead. You're good.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passed. Depositories of school funds. To approve Old National Bank and First Merchants Bank as depositories for school funds for 2023 and to authorize the opening of the following accounts. The 2022 athletic complex, LTGO debt retirement account, the 2022 school building and site debt retirement account, and the 2018 capital projects debt retirement account. I need a motion in a second?
Or move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Designation of authorized signatures on accounts. To approve the designation of authorized signatures on specified accounts as listed for 2023. We have the general fund, the debt retirement fund, the general fund capital projects, internal accounts, cafeteria account, and the athletic impressed account. I need a motion in a second?
So move.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Designation of person posting notices. To approve the administrative assistant to superintendent to be responsible for all appropriate postings for the 2023 board meetings. I need a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. Designation of election duties. To approve the administrative assistant to superintendent to act as the election coordinator for the district for 2023. I need a motion in a second?
Remove.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. And school board committees, committee of the whole.
Yeah, I'd like to bring up this discussion. Former President Brink and I were in conversations about changing the format of the committees, going from what you call committee of the whole to some subcommittees that specialized in certain areas. And then you'd have, obviously, your other ad hoc committees as, as listed or as needed, along with, we'll need a negotiation team for this year because we have teacher negotiations. So my recommendation would be, is the creation of a personnel and finance committee, where up to three board members would serve on that and the personnel and finance issues, which almost everything's financing because it's about money. But, you know, that is a, one, one committee. And then a facility and maintenance committee, again, no more than three board members on that one. And then I would recommend that we have a negotiation team where one person from at least the personnel and finances on that, along with someone else, so that, for the purpose of them working with myself and our business manager for negotiations with teaching staff or DESPA in the future. Yeah, well, the wellness committee's already in there. That's one of those already. So that would be one of the ad hoc. These are the standing committees, as I would recommend them, and then continue with the wellness reproductive health, the school improvement committees, and then anything else as we need when we might ask for people to volunteer. So that's, that'd be my recommendation to consider, that change in format. Anything that doesn't fall in those will still come up before the board. The subcommittees will only, they'll do the heavy load, the work, they'll make recommendations, but then all items will be voted on before the board, so...
Can you explain the school improvement committees and how that would relate to facilities, standing committee? You have an ad hoc committee of school improvement and various buildings listed.
They, they list the ad hoc committees. I mean, this was, from there was a wellness committee as one of them, and that's one representative. Then school improvement has been our format in which we have at least one...
One board member per building.
One board member per building. That would continue. I'm not asking for a change in those, that format at all.
You're just suggesting that you add, because you've got finance committee, which we've had that before?
Yep.
But then we're adding facilities maintenance committee as its own?
Personnel and finance, that, those would be the main topics of that committee, and then a facility and maintenance committee. And it just, we'd still would, you know, have, but we would not, everything would not be brought out as a committee whole. The typical committee whole that I'm used to, and I apologize, just, just my observations, is typically that's done two weeks before the decisions are made. So the committee of the whole discusses the things, but there's nothing voted on. In our format, I, I don't love it because it kind of brings on surprises versus you guys being well-informed. I think, you know, as you get these big items such as the budget, you know, and negotiations and parameters and all those kind of things that are so important, and, and adding staff and, and, you know, possibly reductions if necessary, those are all some pretty big, important decisions. And it just, this, this is my, pulling my knowledge from my old school district, now it functioned pretty well. They typically recommend M A S B, that you don't have more than two real standing committees. I think those are the appropriate ones. You always can call other committees as needed. And it just would, I don't want to say it would eliminate the committee of the whole because we still have discussion, it's just not everything has to go that route. It can be done through the subcommittees and then presented.
But everything's decided in open, public session?
Absolutely.
There's nothing decided in these smaller meetings?
No, absolutely.
So there a need for school improvement ad hoc if you're going to make amendments?
Well, school improvement is more on the academic side. It's not on the facility side. It's on the instructional goals and, yeah, those kind of things. Yeah, sorry, I didn't realize that's where the confusion was at.
So is there, so the ad hoc lists a finance committee. Is there, are you proposing a finance standing committee, and then there's also a finance background?
No, I, I think it replaces, the finance committee would be the personnel and finance committee.
Shouldn't be listed?
Yeah, and I, I recommend three people be, yes, correct. Yeah, the finance committee would go into a standing committee that is personnel and finance.
Thank you.
Yep, and we'd need up to three members. I wouldn't just want one. Three is a nice sampling of the board to have some work done, some heavy load. Facility maintenance, up to three again, can't have more than three here, it becomes a meeting. And then, obviously, I think next month, we'd talk about the negotiation team as we start to prepare to have conversations with the teachers.
When you had this set up before, have you had certain board members in their roles be on certain committees, like, you know, the, the treasurer's always on one committee over the other?
Not so much, but I will say, you know, people have, again, expertise that they may bring to it. With our negotiation team, we had someone from, that was part of the consumers management, and they would go to the table with the union and that kind of stuff, so they brought skills to it. Typically, your board president might be on your personnel and finance because that is a pretty heavy committee. You know, a lot of decisions or recommendations about the direction of the district and the finances are decided there. You know, possibly a treasurer, you know. Again, it's, it's what people are available to do. I would say the personnel and finance would probably meet at least four times a year. The facility and maintenance sometime, somewhere between two and three, and then, as needed, you probably want a spring and a fall, kind of, we review the buildings, we walk the buildings. you probably want a spring and a fall, kind of, we review the buildings, we walk the buildings, and we make observations. Then we prioritize current projects. Obviously, with our construction, we've got our own new projects, but we're, this group is more on the focusing on the current state and what needs to be addressed. And I think I have talked to Mr. Pilby and about, I think he'd be an awesome member of that with his knowledge, so. Crystal?
And how does, like, the strategic plan and those committees that you wanted to go, does that intertwine with these new committees that, because we haven't talked about the strategic plan coming up in a while? And you had mentioned that you were going with, hoping to go with committees for the strategic plan as well.
The, my understanding is I have my goals, and a part of those will be rolled out into school improvement and, and some of these other ones. So I am being assessed on the goals that were given to me. And the biggest where the, the strategic planning, August, can you explain any of this too? That where that fell in and if these meet the needs of that group?
In the passage, the strategic plan, we had four, four subcommittees and we met probably, what, four to five times a year? Early on, we met a lot more as the, as we, our punch list was getting knocked out, that fell out maybe once or twice a year, just to update that strategic plan as we were going. So not really a connection to, I mean, there was one with finance, curriculum, facilities, and then communication were the four subcommittees. So there was some overlap there, but they were strictly to go about the initial goals that we developed with the strategic plan from like six, six years ago, something about right? But it took us a couple of years, four or five years to work on the goals that were created six years.
Yeah, so instead of doing a strategic plan that had a, like a five or six-year window, we have moved to a yearly assessment of goals and then a readjustment at, you know, if needed or when appropriate. So, you know, we're going to reflect on year to year, the progress I'm making and our district's making on the goals that were set for, for me and the district. Does that make sense? Okay. And, and something that was brought up too, a curriculum, though I would call it a standing committee, but sometimes there isn't as many curricular changes in one year as there may be in another, depending on the cycles, and that would be one of those that you bring, you call like, hey, we're going to have a need to meet, and then we can recruit members to be on that committee.
Okay, so is this something that has to be voted on?
I think it would probably be at least the creation of the Personnel and Finance Committee, and then select those members so that can start, and also the Facility and Maintenance. Yeah, if you would.
To approve the Board of Education of Dundee Community Schools to conduct its business using standing subcommittees that will report to the board, finance, personnel slash finance, facilities slash maintenance, this move. So we're essentially changing it from committee of the whole and then breaking it down into these two bigger.
And anything that doesn't fit in there will still come in the old standard of, you know, the first time being talked about where many of the things will be talked about in the subcommittees before they're then rolled out here.
Yep. And then will you make?
Minutes and notes will be created and
Passed out.
Passed out, absolutely.
And then for this, are we, are we making a motion to the members who want to appoint to this committee tonight, or are we just accepting that we're doing a different approach with these two different committees?
I mean, do we want to have a little bit of time to think about?
That would be okay.
Everybody right now?
I guess if we agree to that and then people want to have some conversations about which committees they want to be on or they feel like they can help in, I think that'd be fine too.
I think that'd be good.
So it would be the first step was just establishing those and then at the next meeting, members will be selected.
Okay. So this is to approve the Board of Education of Dundee Community Schools, conduct its, conduct its business using standing subcommittees that will report to the board, and that is Personnel and Finance and Facilities and Maintenance. I need a motion in a second.
So move.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Now we're going to jump to. So this is for the delegates for the 2023 M A S B Delegate Assembly. We need two. Who served on that last year?
It was Josh and I.
Okay.
So I would, I would thank you as president, and then I'd be happy to also continue doing it. I've been doing it for a couple of years.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, so to select Christian and Tara as voting delegates for the 2023 M A S B Delegate Assembly. Our district enrollment allows two Dundee Community Schools voting members. I need a motion in a second.
So move.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Designation of debit card use to authorize a superintendent, administrative assistant to the superintendent, maintenance director, and the director of technology to use the district debit card for district purposes only for 2023. I'll need a motion in a second.
Motion.
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, Mr. Leach?
And, oh, sorry. There is no agenda items to discuss in the last committee of the whole and as it is known. We're going to move on to informational items, and I'm going to pass it over to Sharon. Expenses versus budget or anything? Any questions you might have for that? Yep.
I don't have any.
Nothing. Debit card transactions? Any questions? No? Pay app summary and detail? Anything? Okay, then we move on.
All right, the agenda. Pending no additional items to the agenda, I need a motion in a second to approve the January 9th, 2023 agenda as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. And the consent agenda, approval of the December 12th, 2022 meeting minutes, approval of the General Fund operational and internal accounts invoices. I need a motion in a second.
Remove.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed. New business. There is no new business for tonight's meeting. And reports from superintendent.
Yeah. I was gonna comment on a couple of things if people would like to stay for a moment. I don't, it depends on each scenario, what the, you know, whether. I don't have, everyone was, yeah, but I was gonna speak, I apologize. Please don't, this is my time, so. Number one, I wanted to clarify on the ACLU inquiry for a moment. Our district, as I came in and I spoke to my administration and heard from the board, we wanted to create a policy that would never have the situation that occurred happen again. And unfortunately, I hear us being vilified. Three of these board members were not members when any of that occurred. A board does operate in public. If things are voted on and policies are changed over two meetings, that's not being hidden from anybody. So there's a rhetoric going on that needs to stop because the facts aren't being presented accurately, and that's frustrating. And people are being accused of things that just are not true. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna state some things. I can't state them all. I'd have to listen to the recordings and get everyone and every question that was asked, whether it was really asked or whether they expect a response back. But number one, we were committed to not having the situation occur that happened in the past in which a student would make a request, and we would honor that request, and the parents would not know about it. And we had made a policy that was for new inquiries into a student making a request. And we thought we had a decent policy. However, it came to light that there were other situations where students before my time here that had had their identities changed under the old policy, and I will explain that a little bit best I can. And I'll be very honest, when the students moved to the high school, the principal was not aware that those changes occurred. It actually came up that the principal called the student by name, and the dad's like, why are you calling it? Well, that's the name. We found out we had other students in situations like that, so we went to correct that situation. So we're trying to do the right thing, which I heard people say very clear. You know, on one end, it's, we shouldn't be teaching this stuff, and I totally disagree with you. I totally agree with you that we should not be teaching it. Okay, but we should be supporting students that are struggling through that. But we also can all agree that parents should be involved in those conversations. And the policy we created, and, and actually, I'm going to say something here. The ACLU meeting, and it wasn't litigation, they were requesting we stop it before it went to litigation. And I saw, I see every opportunity as an opportunity to listen, learn, and improve. I think you should take that advice too, because some of the information you're getting is not accurate. You, there was anger in people's voices in which I don't even know what they were talking about. And, and again, solutions aren't made by lies and fueling up people. It's working together. So I'm going to address a couple of things. When that meeting occurred, Ms. Wilkins did ask to be on it. I said, it's not really appropriate at this moment, but she gave me a document in which the letter that the ACLU and she had written me, and I can, I had at least two administrators in that meeting, and I made sure they heard Ms. Wilkins' voice. The main thing was is that that policy, she saw the repercussions of it in reflection, that she saw teachers avoiding her, and I'm sorry, I'm using your name, Kim. I apologize. I slipped on that, I shouldn't have. But that she saw the impact is that teachers did not want to talk to her for fear they may mess up or, you know, reveal something. No staff member should be put into that position. That's not what we're in the business to do. But there is a situation, and it is, the law is clear, and the interpretation is if the child is deemed to be at risk as the individual who spoke about homelessness and abuse, if it is deemed that's the case, that is the scenario. What I will say is we didn't, as a district, vet the request as well as we should have. We didn't ask more questions. We didn't send them to a counselor to talk about situation to better understand the reason for the request. And, and they gave us a document, which at first I'm kind of like, who's going to do this? And then I thought, you know what, this actually helps us because we can vet it better, and we can work with the child to then encourage them to have the tough conversation with their parent if that's actually what they need to do. So we have, we're still in the process of talking to districts that have done things. We want to better understand what our options are, and then make a policy that, number one, our line in the sand was, we're not keeping secrets from parents. I don't know the answer to at what age a kid can say, I don't care. You know, we, we've got to work that out. And I don't have an answer, so I apologize, but I'm being honest. And if you want transparency, you got to hear the honesty too. We have seven people that are dedicated to improving this district. We have staff that their goal is to help the students grow and become productive citizens. And attacks against them or these individuals is unfair and unreasonable. It is unproductive, and it's actually counter to what I know what you folks want. You want a school district that works with you, and we want to work with you too. Absolutely. I heard you, I heard this loud and clear. When I interviewed, I heard it, and, you know, the one thing I heard is lean on the administration, listen to the administration. That's the first thing I did. And we went to bat, and I said, I can't have a policy that was like before where a parent, we have to go, staff, expect staff to go one way, and then the parent walks in and it's another. We're not doing that. We either won't change it until the student is ready to have a conversation with the parent, and then at that point, you know, I don't, I don't know. At what age can a kid say, no, I'm still going to do it, but at least the parent will know. And that's what I feel is fair and the right thing to do. We don't teach kids to be gay. We teach about life, and there's many things. And I heard someone say, God made them that way. Well, you know, Bruce Jenner, that example, great example, he knew it way back when. And he struggled with it for years and years and years. So I see both sides of it. I don't want to be that person to determine it. I want to help, and as a principal, I always, a kid, we, we're not in the business of a kid coming to you and confiding in you and us running to the parents. That's not what we're in the business, we're trying to get a kid to work through. And I always, the first thing I said to a kid when they ever came to me was, have you told your parents? No. You need to start there. You need to have a conversation with your mom and dad. And maybe they weren't ready to have it, and then I feel that's our job to work with that child, to build up the skills, to then have that tough conversation. It may be tough, it may not. We were wrong in our interpretation of the risk the student would be at. That if we didn't tell the parent because that student didn't get abused, wasn't, we overly applied what the law says about a student could be at risk. What we did is we took the kid's word. Hey, do you want us to, you know, do you want to talk to your parents about this? No, I don't want them to know. And that's all we did, and that was wrong too. We will do a better job of finding out the reasons behind it, whether it be pressure from other kids to be a part of this group, et cetera. You have my word, we will work on doing what's right. And that's, the makeup of this board is very clear. And they want that too, and I can tell you, there is no one in this room, any of you or us, that don't want what's best for kids. We may not agree always on how to get there, but we do have, all have our kids' best intentions in mind. And I ask for your patience. I'm new, and I'm trying to figure this district out, but the attacks I get sent to me do not help, and it's not directly at me, they do not help. The rile up people with half truths and outright lies sometimes is not acceptable. There are some truths in that, and I'm not going to deny those either. I'll be the first one to say we probably should have handled that different. With the ACLU, we screwed that up. We handled it wrong. That's why the ACLU came in. And the minute we said, yeah, that was not our intention and that didn't go out the right way, it went ba, it went from, you guys are horrible people to, hey, okay, it sounds like you want to do the right thing, and we're working with them, other school districts, to find the right answer. That's all I will ever do. I have to look in the mirror myself every day and say that I did what's best for my kids, and that's your kids. My kids are grown up. I care about all kids. It hurts me that I hear a parent. My kids are grown up. I care about all kids. It hurts me that I hear a parent say that their child is being bullied. That hurts me. We'll look into that. Now, a lot of the times, there's more to the story than just one-sided, so please be patient. Now, the other side of the FERPA thing or the, uh, ACLU is going in there was kind of intimidating. I'm not gonna lie. You know, we didn't know what to expect. And I did, speaking to Mr. Brink, who used to sit right here, I said, do you think it'd be a good idea to have Mrs. McKenzie in in case I had a question as to something they may throw at us legally wise? And he said, I think it would be a good idea. I asked Ms. McKenzie to sit in. She was reluctant to sit in on that meeting. She says, that's not my area of expertise. And I said, I don't need you as an expert in that area. I need you in case I go, hey, what, what did they mean by that? What does that mean? And she was willing to sit in. She sat in for half of the meeting and then had to leave. It was a very productive meeting in that the ACLU saw the spirit in which what we were trying to do was not to harm kids, out kids, or anything like that. It was to try to do the right thing. And we, I stood my ground and said over and over again, we will not accept a policy in which we have to, our staff has to go, you know, live this two lives of what the parent, how we call the kid, in front of the parent, how we call it. We said, no, that's not gonna happen. I don't hear the applause there because I think that's what we want. We all want to help our kids. I'm here. I don't think you can write that up in that way. I think it's, and it still takes time. We are working through every single scenario so that it's right, so that my administration, when they're faced with it, they can deal with it in that way. I have, I don't, I don't know when it will be. I can't create a timeline when you have to ask more questions. It's tough. But what we have said is, we're not gonna change anything at this moment until we have a different policy or the parents are on board. That's all I can promise at the moment. This, it's hard work to come up with a policy so sensitive. There is a part of it that if a kid is really threatened, we are not to inform the parents. I'm sorry? All right, hold on. Whoa, 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 whoa. Hold on, hold on. We, social services is immediate threat. And that would be something like, I'm being abused. That's typically the situation that you call in on. Again, because a student says, I might not, my parents might not react the way, then we would say, then we're not gonna do it yet. We're not, until you're willing to have the conversation with your parents, at least so they know, that's where we're gonna stand. And that's where we'd like to stand. Again, it's a work in progress. That's where we'd like to be. That's our goal, is that we don't have to, trust me, my administration, um, is frustrated and talks about retirement all the time because they don't have, they don't want to deal with this. They wanna, they don't want to deal with discipline either, but they, they want to do what they're really meant to be here to do. But in the same sense, we are here, this is not a discussion, so I don't want to, I don't want to get, I apologize. I am always, if you want to send an email to me with your phone number, I will respond. Then give us time. I, I understand that, but, but at least argue with facts. I don't know who did, I got screenshot. I, I don't know, you don't know what post I'm referring to.
I think we need to look into this and respond.
I hope people will give us the benefit of the doubt. I am new. Those policies didn't happen under my superintendency. It didn't happen under this current board. You need to give us time. Do you trust our administration? I think they are community members that have a great deal of trust with the people. They're helping me guide this process. I am not a sole person. I am a collaborator. I think anyone will tell you that. Give us the time and you, and the outcome will be there. I ask for your patience. Absolutely. Sir. Sir, if you would send me an email with your concerns, I will respond. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We gotta move on here.
Sir, thank you. Onto the businessman, uh, some updates, business manager interviews. I am, uh, either Thursday and or Monday, we will interview. There were three candidates, as mentioned before. So we will be, um, I'll be working with the ISD to hire our next business manager at that point. Then we'll develop a plan with Sharon as to her exact exit date based on whoever's hired. Um, the, obviously, on a sad note, um, Friday was not, um, a pleasant day and, and um, I hope our thoughts and prayers go to the, uh, family of our custodian that passed away. They had, she had a daughter that was a graduate last year. Um, there's a collection going around, but I, I do want to say how proud I am of our administration, Aaron and Cindy Adelbrock were amazing, consoling the family. Work, working with the, working with the custodial crew that was shaken up by the situation. Um, extremely impressed and proud of them. It's what I thought Dundee was about, the family that, that was there. So please, thoughts and prayers. I'm not, really don't want to get into that. I think if you ask around, you'll find out. So, thank you though. I'm sorry, I just, um, insurance claim. Work, uh, first of all, thanks to Brian, August, Raleigh, Daryl, their kids that came in and, uh, did triage immediately on the pipe burst in the high school. Um, some of the issues we're looking at is the wrestling room practice mats. They haven't come back in the shape. They're kind of wrinkled and we're concerned that over time they may crack, so we're concerned about that. The wood platform underneath, um, the auxiliary gym floor, um, the water rolled in and went to the auxiliary gym that, right now, we're getting quotes on to have the entire floor um, sanded down and where it's cupped, and that will be sanded out. That also, it'll be done over the summer. If the boards don't respond better, it may be some replacement of the board. So, um, we're getting quotes on both of those. Um, let me see, some carpeting in the bandroom choir, and I think there was another room, August, that had carpeting issues. Yeah. Yep. So that was another area where carpet could be an issue. And we are worried about tile, um, under a lot of those floors, having water penetrated through them. So, um, not only after the adjustment's done, we'll keep an eye on it. And if we have to come back to SETSEG, we will do so. Also, some sheet music, a lot of sheet music was damaged, and that's copyrighted material, so that costs money. So, um, we're creating a list for SETSEG, our insurance company. Let me see, change, okay, uh, that's about it. Let me see here. There is a concern that we're, the nine, August mentioned ninety-seven C, um, grant funds. And a concern coming up is the liability of you get a report that says what you should do, yet then can you afford all those corrections or adjustments? So the question is the liability issue there. That's a big concern. And both companies that we talked to have kind of mentioned that, that there is that concern out there. So, um, just, you know, and that, as I mentioned before, it's great to get a report, but if you don't have the funds to implement it, that's a little different. Uh, and then I don't, Dave didn't mention that we're looking into some, um, handicap accessible solutions, not only at the middle school office area and the high school office area. Where our doors are at, at the high school, we'll start there. They're in the middle banks of doors, but the buzzers in the right bank. So unfortunately, a handicap person can't get buzzed in like all the other students, so we're looking at how to deal with that. We didn't put them in. When it got locked down, that's where they were at. And then at the middle school, we're looking at the different options. If we allow the first door to their corridor to the office, we're gonna have to replace the door and everything else. Or we may, uh, power, power and put a buzzer in for where the current mechanical arm is at. So just unfortunately, these things are pretty expensive stuff. We have a student that, um, we need to accommodate and obviously, uh, work on that. So that's what we're looking at there. And I think that's it. I do thank you guys for your, um, willingness to serve on the board. It's not always easy. Um, and I can assure you, and I think I would like to think I've walked the walk, that I am here to do the right thing, the right way. And I'm a pretty balanced person. I think we'll find solutions if we work together. I, I hear what the people say. I do. There are two sides to everything, but there's middle ground where we can find the answers. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any additional board comments?
I just have a quick couple. Um, Scott, just to make sure we remind everybody, board workshop.
Oh, thank you. The twenty-first at nine AM. Yeah, we're having a workshop. Uh, it's a combination of new board training, but also team building. So, um, so yes, and it's here and breakfast will be provided. So.
And then that, I'm assuming we'll go over that point, the CBA one-on-one classes for new incoming board members. If you haven't already registered with Ms. Wilson, she can help get you guys set up for that because that will help you know the ins and outs of board responsibilities and things like that. So it's very helpful. So I just wanted to, it's CBA one-on-one, I believe. Through MASB is the first class.
Well, is everybody's emails working, the new members? Okay, so we'll get you some information on there. And obviously, we support the board taking these workshops or, and or further workshops to, um, help them as they learn, you know, what it is to be a board member. And, and remember, you know, this is another piece of it. Each of you are one of seven, and you are not, you have no power individually. Together though, you have that ability to direct and create policy and give me guidance. And so we've got to remember that, that that's, that's how boards were designed, was that as a whole, decisions are made now, you know, three, four vote, that's it. But, um, and it's, it's tough. People will work on you and you got to remember that, that you're only one vote. And, um, if I hope that you seek all sides of issues so that you make informed decisions. And that's, I try to do the same. And, uh, it's, it's not easy work in these times, but I think it is rewarding work. And it's, it is, we're, we're, we will get to that trust. Unfortunately, there's still a lot of mistrust, and that's unfortunate, and we'll get through that.
Yep. That was all. I just want a couple reminders, and, um, obviously, welcome to the board and happy new year to everybody. That's all. Congrats, Christian.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The lady's gone already, but, um, we do have a policy that encourages a student body to attend, just so everybody is aware that policy is already there. Um, so, yeah, and then I'm also grateful that you guys postponed last month, the ninety-one fifty policy that I had concerns about back in September. So I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Um, I just want to say thanks for everyone that came and, um, and spoke tonight. And I do believe that our board, we can work together and we can have transparency with our community and, you know, just kind of get the trust back that everybody I think is desiring. So congratulations, everyone else, and look forward to four years.
All right, I just want to say thanks to new board members and welcome, and, uh, looking forward to a successful two thousand and twenty-three with the board and the administration and our superintendent. So make a, uh, motion to adjourn the January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three regular board meeting. I need a motion in a second. I made a motion. Yeah, sorry. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, adjourned.